I'd like to call this meeting to order, please. I'd like to call this meeting to order, please. I know when no one wants to, but I'm gonna do it anyway. I'd like to have everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, announcements. Thursday, June 25th at 7:00 PM is a regular council meeting here in the Matthew Thornton Room. With the exception of the retreat, which is scheduled for July 23rd, the town council will meet only once in the months of July and August on the following dates. Thursday, July 16th at 7:00 PM here in the Matthew Thornton Room. And another regular council meeting is Thursday, August 20th, 7:00 PM in the Matthew Thornton Room. The retreat is going to be held, as I mentioned, on Thursday, July 23rd from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM at the Surris Conference Center in Bedford. Today marks the one year since we lost our beloved Chairman Dave Yakuboff Senior. It's been difficult accepting the realization that he's not coming back. He is frequently mentioned in conversations, always ending with either a hearty chuckle or simply stating how much he is missed. I think we can all agree that you can truly feel the void in his absence. We miss you, Dave. Okay. Okay, Kinder Morgan. Oh, no, you don't have anything to say, do you? I'm sorry, Eileen, go ahead. You don't want to say anything.
The Merrimack High School graduation is this Saturday, June 13th at 10:00 AM. And the YMCA triathlon will be held this Sunday, June 14th at 9:00 AM at Camp Sergeant Road. This event will cause traffic delays along Camp Sergeant Road, Tinker Road, and Continental Boulevard. That's it.
That's it. Okay. Some Kinder Morgan information. Not too much, but a few things to update. The Nashua Regional Planning Commission, NRPC, has issued a draft report from their EFAC Subcommittee. EFAC is the Energy Facilities Advisory Committee, and it has to do with the analysis of the 13 communities that NRPC cover. We did submit a correction of some data that was in the draft, and that had to do with the number of town residents impacted. They had 61, and we corrected it to 153. There's also a meeting set at NRPC tomorrow, which will be attended by Tim Thompson, who's the Director of Community Development, Eileen Cabanal, the Town Manager, and myself. And we'll let you know what happens with that. A letter has been drafted by the town attorney and has been approved that corrects the resident impact number and will be submitted to the FERC docket. Amherst has also written a very good letter, very well-written and has a lot of good information, to FERC related to the need for the pipeline, and that letter can be viewed on their website. There is really nothing new in terms of the action items. Some of the things I've already said relate to it, but there's nothing beyond that. Okay, comments, general comments from the present public. Jody, yes?
Just not for any decision-making tonight, but I was just wondering, Eileen and I had a conversation about it, too, and we discussed the possibility of this town council possibly making a public statement. Possibly making a public statement in talking about the Amherst letter that the Board of Selectmen wrote. Eileen and I had a discussion, and we talked about the possibility of this council making a public statement in support of that letter. So I would just like to throw that out there for the members of the council to think about, and possibly in the next meeting, I might, you know, make a proposal or something. So if you haven't had a chance to read the letter, please do so. As Nancy said, it is very, very well-written, no emotion, just fact, and I think it's something that I would like to possibly discuss having the town of Merrimack get behind and support that letter. Thank you.
And I might recommend maybe a little draft of a letter would facilitate it, too. What kind of information you'd like? Great. Huh? That would be nice, if there was a draft kind of letter that we could review in terms of support.
I'll work on that.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Hi. Deborah Huffman, 60, Emmers Road. One question. Where do we stand with the survey? I think when we were last here, it was still kind of going back and forth. They, we had sent some proposal, they had some sent back, we were sent back. Where are we with that as far as the survey?
My understanding is the attorney is still negotiating with Kinder Morgan.
So we're still kind of going back and forth, trying to figure out, trying to nail down those details?
I'm not even sure that they've necessarily connected yet, so I don't know that there's any real, you know, argument, you know, strong opposition from them yet, so...
Right. It was just like one or two little details about whether we could be with them all the time when they were out there or something like that.
That's a big detail.
It is, no, I agree. Oh, I'm wholeheartedly in favor of the attorney sticking to her guns, you know, sticking to our guns. It just seems reasonable, but, not that it's small, but just curious. So we haven't officially given, made the agreement yet to give permission.
There's been no resolution yet. We know that the attorney is speaking with KM, but there's no resolution.
And the other thing is just to comment about how far we've come since December, when we first stood here and talked about this. Because, I can't speak for you, but I knew nothing about energy in December. It's been a steep learning curve, and it was just so heartwarming to read that Amherst letter and see how far they've come also. Most of us, I can't speak for you, but everybody I know really knew nothing about this. And we've all had to come up to speed, and then we read things, and some things were wrong, but it's been six months now, and everybody who's really been thinking about this carefully and slowly and reviewing the data, kind of, you know, weeding through the hype, has come to sort of understand what the real reality is about this and what is needed and what isn't needed, and where it's needed, and what Spectra's gonna do, and what PNGS is gonna do, and it's just, it's nice. We've really, if any of you know any groups or any people that really still kind of are stuck with the first words, like what they're seeing on TV, like, "It'll lower our energy, our electric bills," you know, and kind of everybody knows that's not true anymore. But we'd be happy to talk to them, you know? We'd be happy to start sharing what we've, we're now kind of really understanding well enough to talk sensibly about, you know? That there's no, really no reason for anybody still to believe that, that this is really about their electric bill. It really isn't, and now we know that, and we can back that up, just like the Emmers letter did. So I just thought I'd put that out there. If any of you know of anywhere, it would be useful for us to talk, or anybody who'd like to talk about that and really believes it's about lowering their electric bill, we can talk about that now.
Very good. Thank you, Deb. Any other comments? Okay, let's move on. Recognition, resignations, and retirements, none. Appointments, annual review with the Agricultural Commission with Chairman Bob McCabe, I'll come on up. Per Town of Merrimack Charter, Section 6-6, at least annually, there should be an annual review with the Agricultural Commission. This agenda item is to highlight the commission's significant actions, current projects, anticipated actions, and to raise any concerns that council should know or could act upon. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of council, members of Town Manager's office. My name is Bob McCabe. I'm the chairman of the AI Commission. It's been a busy year so far, as they all are. Community garden is up and running. We're almost 100% filled. We've had some woodchuck problems, nothing we can't take care of eventually. It happens every year. There has been a request from a few of the gardeners. We have a food lot, plot, excuse me, that goes to National Pantries, and we have a Veterans Food Plot this year for veterans in need. Two or three of the veterans have asked me if the town council would consider an opportunity to raise a flagpole in the community garden on a seasonal basis and raise the flag every day. I ask you to consider this and think about it, get back to us. It would be put in the spring, taken out in the fall as the ground is, put back to sleep. The veterans would take care of it. We could light it if you needed to. We can get a, I'm trying to remember the name now, a nightlight system for it, not with wires, but solar system. Something to consider. It's not life or death, but I was asked. Item two, the farmer's market. The market opens next Wednesday, June 17th. We are expanding again this year. On the short list, we have 23 vendors. On the long list, waiting for further paperwork, we have 27, 28 vendors. A lot of them new, as well as some of the old timers that were there last year. We are at the new site at 526 DW Highway, Vault Storage Building, and very welcome there. We feel very much at home there. We thank Mr. Morgan for his gracious invitation to be there. Membership. We lost one member who moved away this past season. We gained a new member, so we're still equal. We are still looking for three full-time and three alternates. Three of us have just submitted to re-up again, and the town council has to consider that at some point. Thank you for that consideration. With the completion of master plan and designation of farms, we've developed an up-to-date farm list. Eber was actually responsible for that. We feel we have 21 large farms in Merrimack. Small farms and gardens, we have no accurate number on because they're not easily identifiable. It would be nice to know who's out there, but we really can't be sure until they come forward. As you know, the bylaws are completed. Every month at our meetings, we review UNH extension courses that are available to the public. We encourage anybody out there to learn from them or take them. Most of them are free. There is a site charge for some of them. We identify new insects and quarantine problems in our county, in our state. 4-H projects are encouraged through the commission, and with some funding from us and funding from UNH Extension, money is available for certain students or 4-H members in need. This year, we co-sponsored a girl who is doing horse judging in Durham, and she successfully completed that series, and I believe later this fall, she's on her way to Kentucky for a national judging event. And it was, she did a lot of work for it, and we're very proud of her. Currently, we're working with a Girl Scout to help achieve her gold award badge. This is an 80-hour program. We feel she could be helpful at the farmer's market. She is up to date with social media. She will interview the vendors, talk about products, food safety, recipes, the quality of food. We encourage her to move forward with that. She'll be at a lot of the farmer's markets this summer. She's a junior at the high school, and we hope to have her maybe for another year, if she likes it and it works for her. With the help of Finance Department, we reviewed a SNAP program, a grant. Ultimately, we turned it down, but Finance did help us translate some of the concerns. With the new farm built, there are grants out there available. We just haven't found the right one to tap into that would be effective for us in our farmer's market situation or in the agricultural sense of the word. Let's see. On a final note, is there a tree warden in town, per se?
I think so.
No? Yes. In watching Channel 20, I see that sometimes you guys get into tree problems, and I've been a licensed arborist for over 40 years, and as a contributor to this process, you can tap into me for suggestions or not if tree problems become a concern, especially on an immediate basis. I mean, as an arborist, we look at it differently than a forester would, but we could give an honest evaluation and maybe bail you out of some unforeseen situations in the future.
Thank you.
Just food for thought. Other than that, we're looking forward to a prosperous year, continued membership drive. And does the council have any questions, concerns?
You look like you have one, Bill.
Well, it was more of a comment about the flagpole at Wasserman Park. Don't we already have a flagpole that's down there?
You do.
So we would be looking adding, potentially adding a second flagpole to Wasserman Park?
It's not always up, though.
I understand that. Okay.
It's just something for the veterans.
It's not always up.
It's not always up?
Flag.
Okay. Well, the same people who do this one, why aren't they doing the current one?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
The people that you have on plan to do a new one, why can't those same people be putting up the flagpole that's already there?
These people are priding themselves in their garden plot, and their suggestion was to put it right there, the pride of the garden.
Oh. So it's the location of the current one that they're object to?
They do not object to that. They do not have...
That's strong. I just mean that the place where it is right now, they're not interested in that spot.
It's not really theirs, I think.
Okay.
Nor do they have permission. So I'm just asking this way.
Passing.
Yeah, remember that town properties are under the jurisdiction of the Town Manager? Oh, yes, by charter.
I approached Matthew, and he suggested I ask the council.
Well...
I think the answer's simple.
And you're all here.
The purview, the purview for that would be, the simplest purview is the Town Manager. Now, if you want to, if you want to put a swimming pool in, that's another story. Okay?
Maybe not.
But as far as a minor issue in terms of the use of the property or embellishment of the property, it would be something that the Town Manager, as the overseer of the town properties, would be the place to go. I'm sure she's thrilled I brought that up.
I really loved the cemetery thing that you gave to me. That was my preference, my real preference. The Queen of the Dead thing. That was it for me.
Okay, so you guys can talk. Okay, good. Any other questions? Yes, Tom?
The garden plot at Wasserman, you mentioned it briefly. Is that going well, or is it filling up, or what?
It's almost full right now. There was a request for one more plot, which I could find one more. This year, there was requests, every year, there's spoilage there, stuff left there. We've tried to ask the gardeners to contribute to a food pantry with very little success. So this year, a couple of the gardeners took it on themselves to ask for a designated 10 by 10 plot to grow food just for the pantry. And then a couple of veterans asked me for the veterans pantry. So we had room. I volunteered two plots for them, and they are working them. It's an extra for them. They're going out of their way to do it, and I commend them for doing that. We have, it's a big garden, and people give up later in the summer, unfortunately, and a lot of that stuff goes to waste. And anytime I've gone to a pantry to contribute or other members of the garden, they're more than willing to accept anything we have that's fresh and available, and the waste is sometimes enormous over there, and I can't control it. In the spring, I have a class at the library, and I try to beat it to return gardeners to contribute, but they just don't get it. So there are a few that are considerate, and they're the ones that are asking for the yard plots, for the pantries, for the flagpole, that type of thing. So that's what we're talking about.
And did you say that the contributions to the food pantry is down in Nashua, or do you stay here in Merrimack?
They go anywhere they want to. We go down the bottom of the library, he'll take a right, there's a couple of food pantries on there. The veterans have a collection. They know members or other veterans who are homebound. They would collect it and bring some stuff over there. They have a variety of resources to contribute to, I'm sure.
That's awesome. I appreciate that. I'm just wondering...
And we encourage it. I just can't get everybody to follow through, you know? So...
Okay. There are a few food pantries in Merrimack that you might support as well.
I think the primary person does his route. He changes every week or so, you know, a little bit here, a little bit there, a little bit there, you know?
Okay, thank you. I think that's great that you do that.
Any other questions or comments? Well, I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
You're welcome. Have a great day.
Thank you, you, too. Okay, public hearing, none. Any legislative update people here saying none? Town manager report.
Okay. The annual summer concert series will open up for the season on Wednesday, June 17th. The concerts are held on Wednesdays through the summer from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the Abbey Griffin Park. There'll be one on the 17th of June, the 24th of June, the 3rd of July, July 8th, July 15th, July 22nd, July 29th, and August 5th. A variety of different programs. The MYA has delivered their June 30, 2014 audit, and Paul's in the process of reviewing the data and will be bringing it to the council shortly.
And that's it? There's nothing on the consent agenda and nothing on old business, so we'll go right on to new business, committee appointments. Town councils to consider appointing the following recommended individuals, and these are reappointments. That would be Loness Woods for the Heritage Commission. I'm sorry, Lon is not a reappointment. He is a, he was on, when he was on the town council, he was the council rep, so this is his first appointment. But it is a reappointment for Fran Larue for the Zoning Board of Adjustment. I know that Lon is here, but may I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay. Second, Bill Boyd with the motion, and Tom Mahan, second. Any, and, I'm sorry?
Sorry, I wasn't paying attention.
Oh. This is for the reappoint, for the new, for the committee appointments?
I didn't hear the question.
Oh, no, I was just saying, is there any questions for anyone?
Oh, okay.
Related to it, not to you, Eileen, I'm sorry. Okay, all those in favor, say aye? Aye. Seven, zero, zero.
Brief comment, Madam Chair?
Absolutely.
I want to thank publicly Lon Woods for willing to volunteer to serve on the Heritage Commission. I'm happy that he's going to stay involved in town, and he brought a lot to the Heritage Commission when he was sitting up behind here, and I know he'll continue to do a good job as a full-time member. And I also want to publicly thank Fran Larue again for volunteering for the Zoning Board of Adjustment. Fran's been very active in our community for...
Long time.
A very long time, and I certainly want to thank her again publicly for her willingness to serve again.
And Lon's served a couple of years, too.
He's served a couple of years. He's done a couple of different things.
Still does, still does. Lon, would you like to come up and do your oath?
I, Lon Woods, do solemnly swear and sincerely swear that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon me as a full member of the Heritage Commission, according to the best of my abilities, agreeable to the rules and regulations of this constitution and the laws of the State of New Hampshire, so help me God.
Thank you. And thank you for joining. I'm sure the Heritage Commission's going to be thrilled.
They were complaining because he wasn't at the last meeting, and it was our fault for not getting this done.
Thank you very much, Lon. Thank you for coming, Lon. Donation acceptance for the Merrimack Police Department, submitted by Captain Dudash, who's coming up as we speak. Town council to consider the acceptance and expenditure of a check in the amount of $1,073.22 from Merrimack Crime Line, Inc. to the Merrimack Police Department for the K-9 gunny program. Go right ahead.
For the past few years, Crime Line has been put on an annual magic show, and during that show, they raise funds, along with some other fundraisers during the year, and then they present at our open house a check usually in the amount of, usually over $1,000. This year was $1,073.22 to the Chief of Police, and hopefully we're asking the board to accept that on behalf of the gunny account, which will defray some costs such as insurance, medical, such as vet bills, and also food.
That's great. They do that every year, so great of them.
Great. And I believe the total, I think I mentioned, is over $20,000 that they've helped raise.
Wow.
Remember the time we got the donation of spa treatment for gunny?
Excellent. Are there any questions, Captain Dudash? None. Could I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move that the town council accept and expend a check in the amount of $1,073.22 from the Merrimack Crime Line, Inc. to the Merrimack Police Department for the K-9 program, specifically gunny pursuant to child article 8 hyphen 15 in R.S. 31, colon 95, hyphen B. And furthermore, that the town council and/or her proxy be authorized to sign any documents. The town manager and/or her proxy sign... Oh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Talking like me now. Go right ahead.
That the town manager and/or her proxy be authorized to sign any and all documents necessary to perfect the transaction.
Second. Seconded by Bill Boyd with a motion, seconded by Finley Rothaus. Any other discussion? Same now?
Madam Chair, just very quickly, I want to thank Crime Line for all the hard work that they do. The magic show's always a good event for them, and I publicly want to thank them for the commitment that they give to the community in supporting the K-9 program.
Yes, I agree. Agreed. All those in favor, say aye? Aye. Any days saying none? Seven, zero, zero.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you very much. Look at, Paul McCauley smiles whenever he gets money. I was gonna say, we're not two yet yet. Number three, you're number four. Number three. Okay, donation acceptance for the Parks and Recreation Department, and who's, Matt's not here, right? But we can go ahead and do it. right? But we can go ahead and do it. Okay. The town council to consider the acceptance and expenditure of a donation of $195 from the Merrimack Snowbuds to the Nattica Day Camp Scholarship Fund, and a donation of $3,900 from the Rotary Club of Merrimack to be used towards the replenishment of playground safety surfacing for Kids Cove. This is funds left over from when the playground was initially built pursuant to Charter Article 8 dash 15 and RSA 31 colon 35 dash B.
So moved.
Second.
Motion moved by Bill Boyd, seconded by Tom Mayhan. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, I want to thank the Snowbuds. I think annually, we get something from Parks and Rec of the Snowbuds making a contribution to the Day Camp Scholarship Fund program. So, I want to thank the Snowbuds for their contribution, and also the Rotary Club for their continued work and support of everything that is Merrimack.
And Kids Cove, yeah.
And Kids Cove is without a doubt heavily traveled, heavily used, very visible.
Absolutely.
So, thank you to the Rotary Club.
Any other comments? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any ayes? None. Seven, zero, zero. Okay, now. Number four, adoption of New Hampshire Heart Safe Community Initiative. It's been tabled since the May 28th town council meeting because you guys were really busy. Not that... The previous... You were really busy that day, which you've been very busy lately anyway. Town council to consider the adoption of the New Hampshire Heart Safe Community Initiative, which will strengthen the chain of survival for victims of cardiac arrest by focusing on training members of the community in cardiopulmonary resuscitation and automatic external defibrillation. And we have Chief Michael Curia and firefighter paramedic Jeremy Penarian. Thank you, gentlemen. You've got the floor.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chairman of the Town Council, Master Firefighter and Chief of Town Manager, Paul McCauley. This evening, I'd like to just quickly discuss the New Hampshire Heart Safe Initiative. With me is Master firefighter, paramedic Jeremy Penarian. He has spent over a year trying to get the requirements to meet or fulfill the requirements of this program with the state of New Hampshire, and has done a fantastic job. What we're looking for today is just approval from the town council for the New Hampshire Heart Safe Initiative, a letter from the town council stating that the council is in support, and the approval of the town council, approved town manager to assign or sign all documents pertaining to said program. So, I would like to turn this over to Master firefighter, paramedic Jeremy Penarian.
Thank you, everybody, for taking the time out of your schedule today to see me, to present this to you. I know you have a busy schedule, and it's very nice of you to see us. Is that working?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, perfect.
So, just to start out, a New Hampshire Heart Safe Community is what we're looking to become. Just to give a little background on what it is, it's a designation given by the state for reaching goals in CPR and AED training, AED placement throughout the town, and ALS response level. So, the CPR AED training is more on the end of the people of the town, getting them trained and certified on how to do CPR and how to use these devices. The AED placement was great. When I started researching it, I found we were way over and above what we needed for the town, so we've been safe in that aspect for a long time. And the ALS response levels, that's on our end, paramedic level care with the minimum of the ALS advanced level on the ambulance, and then having police officers that have AEDs and things in their cars, so they can do their first line response as well. So, why should we be a heart safe community? To strengthen the chain of survival, which is laid out by the American Heart Association. So, the first link in the chain is always people in the community. And getting that first link in the chain strengthened to be able to take care of these people when something were to happen, such as a cardiac event, makes it a lot better for survival rates. And that's basically what this is pushing for, to make it safer, make it so anybody having a cardiac event has a better chance of survival in the long run. And that's, again, training community members on AED and CPR. That's the biggest part of this. So, how do we become a heart safe community? We have to offer at least 20 classes per year, and that's already taken care of. That's by the professional firefighters of Merrimack. We funded to have six people trained in CPR to be trainers, to teach the people of the town. Also, as I said, placement of AEDs throughout the town. We were way above and beyond what we needed. AEDs located in each school and having a cardiac response plan in place. We have sat down with SAU and come up with a plan that they were on board with. They're very excited about, and we've actually had a few of the teachers come to us and say, you know, can you train us in CPR as well, which is nice to hear. Along with that, we've also been able to train the police officers and the library at a very reduced cost because we're doing it as a community involvement event. So, we've been able to help them out. And also, the MYA has come to us looking for classes as well. So, the training is definitely being received well by the town, and, you know, it's a great thing to see. And then, again, police vehicles, advanced ALS care provided by us, and then a continuous evaluation process to make sure that the Heart Safe Initiative is actually working and to see if we need to change anything. So, just some statistics. These come from the American Heart Association site. These are a couple of years old, so they may be a little bit different, but there were around 383,000 out-of-hospital cardiac arrests, and the survival rate was only 8%. So, that's only 30,640 of those people. When we have CPR and AEDs used on the first line by those community members, it can double or even triple the survival rate of those people in cardiac arrest. And one of the perfect examples of that is we had an incident on Bedford Road where a gentleman went into cardiac arrest, and his friend was able to start CPR. The police officers were able to get to the scene. Again, that chain of survival was just followed all the way through, and he was able to survive the event and walk away. So, that's exactly what we're looking for, and to see something like that happen is a great thing, and we want to repeat that. More statistics, only 32% of cardiac arrest victims receive CPR, and only 2% get an AED put on them and have electricity put in. So, again, getting that training out there, getting people that are willing to do it is a big, big part of this whole program, and we've already had a lot of success. I had a lady that was in one of our classes say that she witnessed an event in the past, and she was able to act. It wasn't in town here. Well, fortunately and unfortunately, it wasn't in town. But, you know, she said she was a lot... She felt a lot better about providing care based on the training that we provided, which was a great thing to hear. And what do we want to accomplish? Basically, we want to save more lives, and this is something that's from the chiefs of the department, all the way down to the guys on the floor. Everybody's bought into this, and everybody's on board. We have two of our... a lieutenant and a captain that are both instructors in CPR. We have four firefighters and two of our daytime attendants that have all become instructors and put work towards this program. So, it's been very well received throughout the department, and it's amazing how well people have worked together on this. And by accomplishing all these goals, we're going to save more lives, and that's what it's all about. And finally, this is a list of heart safe communities that we'd be joining. A lot of the towns around us are already have this designation, so as I said earlier, it's more kind of making us a heart safe region once we get this, which, again, great thing to have.
Nice. Excellent.
Any questions?
Any questions or comments from... first, Jody, and then Bill?
Thank you. If anyone's watching this presentation tonight, whether it be an individual or a group in the community, and if they were interested in training, who should they contact, or how should they go about making a connection so that they can find out when the training is offered?
Absolutely. You can contact me, actually. We have a website set up. It's MerrimackCPR.org. And just put your information in, what you're looking for, and through the wonders of modern technology, it goes directly to my cell phone, and I can return.
I guess you have bought into it, huh?
Merrimack CPR dot org. Thank you.
Good question. Bill?
Jeremy, 32%, is that a nationwide statistic?
So, the whole study started in Seattle many, many years ago, and they started the Heart Safe Community Initiative. So, a lot of it is based off of them, but most of it is just AHA statistics that I got online.
Okay.
And that's American Heart Association, so they do a whole bunch of studies.
Seems awfully low.
It is, and that's why we want to increase that.
I know that my company and company I used to work for throughout their entire facility have AEDs, and I got trained. I was excited to get trained, to get trained on it, get my certification for CPR and AED. And it's quick, it's easy, and you have a good time working with other people, with working the device and working with the dummy. I think it's a great experience. So, I'm happy that we can offer it in the community.
How long is the training? One day?
It takes about... They say it's a four-hour class. It doesn't normally take that long. It depends on how many people are in the class, but they tend to say four hours. But usually, we can get it two and a half to three hours, depending on the amount of people.
And you have that ratio too, don't you?
Yes.
How many instructors versus...
Yeah, it has to be six to one.
Six to one?
Yeah.
One of the educational components here that we understand is that when companies get AEDs, they don't just give them and put them on the wall. They have to be inspected, tested, recertified, to ensure that they're still operating in working condition. So, that's part of the educational process.
How much are AEDs?
Through the state of New Hampshire, actually, there is a grant. It's through the New Hampshire Fire Academy. I'd have to get the contact information to you, but they offer them at a reduced rate. So, I think they have two different types, and they normally go around over $1,000. I think they can get... I think they can get them for 600 to 700, depending on what one you order. And then they have all the stuff that can go with it as well.
Right. Right. Wow. I knew they were expensive. I didn't know that much.
Yeah. They're worth the money in the long run.
Oh, absolutely. Tom, K-9?
I wonder, Jeremy, thanks for the presentation. You didn't really talk about any cost factors. Are there any ongoing cost factors for Merrimack to get involved in this? Is there any reason why anybody wouldn't get involved in this program?
Nope. Actually, all the cost has been taken up by the professional firefighters of Merrimack. As I said, we funded doing all the instructors, paying for all the instructors to go to all the classes. We find the sites on our own. We have instructors that are through... I'm through the Elliott Hospital. A lot of the other instructors are through St. Joe's, so we have two separate sites that we can get equipment from, and they don't charge us for that. That's part of being part of the... Yeah, that's part of being an instructor through there. And then, we go through the library a lot, do a lot of the classes in the basements, and they have those nice little pads to put on the ground, so you don't hurt your knees when you're doing CPR. So, they've been really great to us over there as well. So, basically, no, there is no cost involved in it that's going to be sent to the town.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, Finley?
I think it's a marvelous idea, and I'm all on board. My question was, years ago, we had, I believe, paramedic Fran who was training personnel in CPR, and it became an issue of the air labor, whatever it is. And so, we had, you know, we had to come up and pay her overtime for hours and hours that she had done because she wanted to do it. And so, is this performed on duty time, which I have no problem with at all. It's all actually... and the firefighter association's taking care of it.
Yes, sir.
That's your union, isn't it?
That's why there's no relationship to the Department of Labor.
So, the union is doing this community service.
Well, I appreciate that.
That's really commendable.
It is. It absolutely is.
And as I said, there's...
Really, it's really community service that they're just putting their own time in.
Yes.
And at no cost. Good for them. Good for you guys.
Absolutely.
Says a lot. Any other... Yes, Bill?
Question for... Do we have AEDs at all of our facilities? We do. I know that we... I'm just thinking like DPW, the transfer. Okay.
DPW, which one treatment transfer station is on here, one in the other building.
Before the meeting began, Jeremy, it said there were 30 across town?
It's around that number. I'd have to look at the paper again. I don't have it off the top of my head, but yes, around there. It's probably more at this point because I know the school bought a couple more within the last year, and I think the high school has three, and there's one in every school building. All the patrol cars have them, all the ambulances have them, all the fire trucks have them. It's... And then Budweiser has a few. Fidelity has...
Almost have ten.
Fidelity has a ton of them throughout their facility, so, yeah.
Now, is anyone...
Little stress going on, is it?
Has any of the companies, or is that what you're wondering about? Companies actually contacted you?
Yes, Nashua Corp. actually contacted us. We put a class on for them.
Okay.
And they were very happy with the whole process.
Oh, I'm sure.
So, it was great. It's just great to get out to the community and, you know, talk to the people and get them on board as well.
I wonder if there's a way of really notifying other businesses in town? Because I think if they heard about it, they might be interested versus, you know, they'd have to seek it out and know it's even available. Is there any way that we could, I wonder?
Oh, gee, do you think the Chamber of Commerce might have pulled that?
What can we do?
Business association as well.
Actually, the Chamber of Commerce, we've actually talked with them a couple times, and they've been very receptive to the whole program as well.
Yes, we can connect you with the community development office and get you into some of the big... some of the bigger businesses around town and any of the new ones or small ones as well.
Maybe even an introductory letter that can be sent out, saying this has been developed.
Wonderful thing, really.
You know, we encourage you to take advantage of this opportunity. Yeah.
Well, the reality is that most of them probably do it because it has an impact on their insurance rates.
Okay, but it's one thing to have an AED there. It's another thing to be trained.
Well, that's true.
There's a lot of companies to have that available and maybe have some people.
How many people walk by and don't even know what it is?
Exactly. Or if they do, they're afraid to touch it because they think this is a very complicated mechanism.
I think in the large corporations, and I know for a fact, Anheuser-Busch, they have a... I can't remember what they call them, a response team anyhow. If somebody's having an issue, they have people trained to go and do those type of things. So, it's not that everybody knows how, which... But they... So, I don't know how, say, obey my daughter, what have you, but I think it's a good idea.
They probably have a person or two on each shift as a designated person or something.
But, you know, if it's a voluntary... If they go out there and say, this is available, you might get people other than the teams, just for their own comfort levels. So, I'd really do it. A lot of people... Anybody can do it.
Absolutely.
But it's just... They're just concerned, and just their comfort level would be enhanced if they knew.
Yeah.
Good. Okay. That would be good. So, we have to... Yes, Bill?
Yeah, Jeremy, just to... I think you mentioned it in your testimony, and I apologize, just for my own edification. The training that the firefighters receive is on the AEDs. They're also responsible for going out to where the AEDs are located in the community and checking and testing them?
That's a good question. Part of this whole program is community, passing on the knowledge to the community on how to maintain their AEDs as well. So, part of the program we worked out in our whole plan is to work with the businesses that have them on how to maintain them, getting them on a schedule to check them every month and make sure all they have the pads in date, because that's an important thing, that they stick correctly, and that they have all the literature and things they need to keep up on what they need to do. So, that's actually worked into the plan. It's based on them taking care of it themselves, but we're going to try and lead them in the right direction on how to do.
Setting up a protocol.
Exactly, yes.
Okay. Good deal. Thank you.
Excellent. Okay. We need a motion.
Madam Chair, I would move that the town council adopt the New Hampshire Heart Safe Community Initiative, which will strengthen the chain of survival for victims of cardiac arrest by focusing on training members of the community in cardiopulmonary resuscitation, aka CPR, and automatic external defibrillation use, and furthermore, that the town manager and/or her proxy be authorized to sign any...
Sign them, talk to them.
Sign any letters or documents that may be necessary to reflect the town of Merrimack's commitment to being a heart safe community.
Second.
Motion made by Bill Boyd, seconded by Dan Twire. There's probably no more further discussion. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Don't see any against? Okay. Seven, zero, zero.
Clear there. It was conceded to you.
Nice job.
Jeremy, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank the members, please.
Thank the members, the union for this.
Yeah, please, thank the union.
I will.
Big deal. Thank you.
Okay, the last item. You guys are out of control tonight. Thank God, it's a short agenda. Exactly. Okay, the last item, Transportation Alternative Program, TAP. Grant Award Letter of Support submitted by Town Council Vice Chair, Tom Mayhan. Tom, would you like to speak to this?
Yeah, a couple weeks ago, I got a call from Nelson Disco. It was all distressed because it had been reported to us that the TAP grant had been tabled by the executive council because they wanted some more information on it. Upon further research, it was discovered that the grant... that the grant hadn't even been presented, that it was another issue that had been presented that, that got sidetracked, it had to do with a transportation grant award to the NRPC in Merrimack, and it wasn't this particular program, in any event, it looked like it was, it was originally scheduled to go on that agenda at the end of May, it got pulled by the Department of Transportation, because the project manager, when he was reviewing the stuff that he was going to submit as part of that, felt that it had not been prepared properly, so he yanked it, and held it, I haven't, the closed date for the next Executive Council meeting, there was one yesterday, it wasn't on that agenda, and so the next one is in July, and I haven't seen the, the agenda hasn't been prepared yet, so I don't know whether it's going to be on there or not, in any event, whenever it comes up, I think it would be helpful to just send a letter to the Executive Council and the Governor asking them to support the, the acceptance of the money for, for the program, and we've prepared, there was a letter that was prepared to do that, and just explains what we're going to use it for, and ask them for their, for their, their, their support on the issue.
And I will read the letter, so everyone knows what they're proposing to sign, this is to the Office of the Governor, State House, Governor Hassan, and Executive Counselors.
Hassan?
Hassan, sorry, whatever, on January twenty-second, two thousand fifteen, the Town of Merrimack was notified by New Hampshire DOT that Merrimack's application for four hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars in fourteen to fifteen TAP funds was approved, the project for which the funds will be used, along with the town's twenty percent match of a hundred and nine thousand dollars, will construct approximately twenty-five hundred linear feet of non-motorized multi-use path that will connect Watson Park to the pedestrian crossing of the Sauhegan River, that was installed adjacent to the Effie Turnpike Merrill's Marauders Bridge, the new path will connect the town's center area to the residential and recreational areas, including Wildcat Falls Conservation Area and Merrimack High School, the federal funds are critical to the timely success of the project, without the funding, it will likely be many years before the town could accomplish all of the goals of this project, so that is the proposed letter.
So moved.
Okay, for approval of this letter by the council?
Correct.
And that motion is made by Bill Boyd and seconded by?
Second.
Finley Rothausen, okay, any discussion? Yes, Dan?
Just for Tom, just for more clarification, without the letter, were we missing something, or, this is related to when he came talking about the trail, underneath the Chamberlain Bridge, et cetera, but I guess, maybe I'm still a little in the dark of why he felt it was necessary to do what we're doing?
I, I, I made a request, Nelson didn't make a request, I made a request.
A little icing on the cake?
And I was listening to you the first time, I did, but I mean, I didn't quite really grasp, if we're missing something, just let me know, again?
No, it's, it's a, it's a matter of courtesy, and a lot of times, they want to know, where's the, where's the community on this?
Okay, and there was no paper, there was none? Before and place, there was?
I don't know what the department, I don't know what the Transportation Department's going to submit, but my experience in dealing with the Executive Council is, a letter like this is always something that they appreciate.
And we had a void in that area, whether it came from the community development, or from Planning Board, or, or the Trail Committee, Conservation Committee?
Ali might be able to address that.
I believe what it is, is that whoever was evaluating the prog, the programs for funding, the Governor Council wanted more specific, what the data was, that they use for selection criteria, so, it's just a-
But it didn't turn out to be this grant, it was the other transportation grant that was going to the, this got so screwed up, because of miscommunication between the Public Works Department and the Department, and the State Department of Transportation, that, that, you know, the, the issue was, the, the staff at the DOT apparently did not do as good a job as the project manager at DOT thought they should have done, in trying to explain what the project was, and what the purpose was.
And in your mind, this is, relates more to the Chamberlain Road, Trail, connecting, and all that, okay, thanks.
And we had previously approved the application for the grant anyway, but there had not been an official letter of support for it, so I, I'm understanding, Tom, is like, this is just icing on the cake, we're still actively supporting this process, I guess is the way I look at it. Yes, Jeremy?
The way I took it also was that we, I don't know that we assumed, but we were under the understanding that it would have, the process of its approval would have, would have happened by now, and it hasn't, so now that it hasn't, and we have the time, and we realize that this might, like Tom said, be the icing on the cake, possibly sway some opinions our way, it's, it's a good opportunity, why, why not take it?
Reinforce, yeah, exactly, so we have a motion by Bill Boyd, seconded by Finley Rothausen, did you want to address it at all?
No, I said I didn't address it.
Okay, okay, all those in favor of sending this, approving and sending this, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone against? None, seven, zero, zero, and I have it, we happen to have it ready. Okay. Okay, minutes.
Madam Chair, I would move that the Town Council approve the Thursday, May twenty-eighth, two thousand fifteen, meeting minutes with the following modifications, number one, Council Mahon's addendum is not attached to our packet, it was specifically instructed that the addendum would be included as a part of the minutes, and I would ask that it be attached to the meeting minutes.
Very good, and a good catch. Okay.
And number two?
Go right ahead.
On page thirteen, line twenty-seven, kilowatt with two Ts?
Line twenty-seven? What page again, I'm sorry, Bill?
Page thirteen?
Thirteen, I'm-
Line twenty-seven?
Yep, kilowatt. Any others? Okay, could I have a second, please?
Second.
Seconded by Tom Mahon, any other corrections, changes, seeing none, all those in favor of adopting, approving the minutes with the changes, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, any against? Okay, so it's six, okay, Jody Valencourt is abstaining, so it's six, zero, one. Okay. Okay, comments from the press, seeing none, comments from the public, also seeing none, comments from the council, yes, Dan?
I, in the spirit of healthy debate with the Kinder Morgan discussion, and in respect to Deb Hoffman and her, and her group, they're always here to the very end, today's the day they leave, so it's a little, takes the little fun out of it, and I say that with respect, because I don't mean to be funny or coy, but I feel it's also my personal obligation to always show two sides of a story, and so when the comments come, just a random straight line of, there is no proof, or there will be no lowering of electric rates, and kind of just letting that rate hang out there like that, I'm, I'm forced to just say some facts that support another side of that story, New Hampshire, as you have read in the newspapers many times, they are paying one hundred and nine percent more than the average across America, so to say that we have, we don't have an electrical problem, or an energy pricing problem in, in New England, I think is disingenuous to, to the rest of the facts of the story, as coal plants are closing by federal regulations, they are not being supported by wind or solar, they're being supported by natural gas, the next statement, the Mizzalas Shale Oil Field in Pennsylvania will be mined, will be drilled, the federal government wants that, they didn't discover it just to let it lay dormant, the national energy policy of America wants to take that field and get gas out of it, and they don't want to take it to Texas, they want to take it to New England, these are just facts, Town Council people, we are the peons of the political world, we are the lowest of the low, then it's school board, because school board gets, gets to decide which books your kids read, but for the power of energy policy in the United States, we have little to nothing, so there's a lot of groups out there, they're working hard, but they're making general statements, from Budweiser, to Fidelity, to Atrium, BAE, there's over ten thousand jobs in this town, and if you were to poll any of those CEOs of those companies, they are not happy with their electric bills, there's a reason why they're, that those companies have not come out against the pipeline, there's a reason why the governors in New England have not come against the pipeline, I said this before about our congressmen and our senators, are not coming out against the pipeline, we can all have personal reasons why we don't want to come through our town, granted, I can make the personal, simple, very common sense reason is, at least give me a spigot, if you're going to come through my town, at least let me get access to it, but that's, it's a pressurized line, et cetera, and it's not made to go that way, it's just made to go eighty miles in one direction, that being said, I, I can wrap my conscience in my brain around saying, well, you know, that's maybe good for the country, but I would like to see a, a change, so, it's, it's a very complex issue, and to have groups be against it, I understand, not in my backyard, et cetera, et cetera, but just to say that our companies in New Hampshire do not appreciate the electric rate situation, or even home, down to homeowners, I just think isn't telling the whole story, so, everyone, I have an opportunity to debate it and show another side, I don't like on any issue to have just one side, ten people come up and only say A, B, C, I'm always going to say, well, what about D, E, F, it's my nature, I think so, I think that's what I bring to the council, that's why I, I ran, so I could have a microphone for five years, and say what, what's on my mind, and, and shape my community in a good way, positive way, so, that's what I wanted to say about the Kinder Morgan discussion tonight, thank you. I, it would be fun.
One of the things that surprised me, in a latest document I read, it talked about how much- Nope, thank you, I wish I could remember, it was just a recent document I read, and it talked about the New England states, and how much energy is actually used, and then exported, no, no, to other states. Oh, it was the Amherst letter?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, I couldn't remember, and it was a really good table, and basically it said that all of the New England states, except Massachusetts, export excess electricity, and there was, I want to say it was like nine thousand, whatever, came from New Hampshire and went to Massachusetts, which, and the point they were making, thank you, it was Amherst, that was justification for Massachusetts is the one in trouble, and yet, it is going through New Hampshire to accommodate their need, they're already getting electricity from all the other New England states, they're the ones who have a deficit, we have excess, so when you talk about the cost, that's a really good question, why are we paying so high?
Which explains why FERC has been clamoring Kinder Morgan to go back and take a look at the, at the routes through Massachusetts.
Right, so that's, when you're saying that, I, you know-
And then the counter, the counter argument is, but the eighty miles of a power corridor is just too good for them to pass up, and that's, and that's the debate, and that's what they're, that's why they're here, they're here because of that eighty mile power corridor, and a host of other reasons, I mean, that's, this is not just a, a debate that can be, but there's points on both sides, and sometimes, too many people are, all they're saying is one side of the story, and that there's so much more to be said about, about the entire subject.
Jody?
Thanks, I'm not prepared to debate Dan tonight, but I would debate Dan sometime very willingly.
This was a counselor comment period, not, not a debate, but that's fine.
No, but, um, one thing I do agree with you, Dan, that you said it's very complex,
and it is, and why our electrical rates are the way they are is very complex, do I believe that this NED pipeline, and any gas that goes through it, are going to lower my electrical rates, personally, I don't believe that's going to happen, no one knows for sure, but I also think as a council, you, I think we do need to be very careful in that we do state factual information, and you're speaking on behalf of governors and businesses in town, who you say haven't taken a formal position one way or the other, I don't believe that's a fair statement for any one council member here to speak on behalf of businesses or our elected state officials, so I, I, I just, I would caution you on, on some of that, and, and there are, those people need to speak for themselves, I don't think we should be speaking for them, I think it's a very complex issue, I think there are some very, very strong arguments about why most of the people in New Hampshire, you know, you say we could poll the people, I, I think that's another opinion too, I don't think that's based in anything factual or any real data, so I would just caution Town Council members when they say things like that, to just make sure you preface it with my opinion, and that we don't speak on behalf of, of other people, that's all, and I understand where you're coming from, I personally, when I make an opinion, I really, really strongly look at both sides of an argument, but I also want to gather facts, and I try really hard to separate the hype and the emotion from the factual information, you know, it's, it's difficult to not be emotionally charged about this issue, but I also try very hard, but I think we need to be cautious with our words, and what we say here too, and I agree, there are two sides to our story, but I also believe that there is a lot of misinformation in the, in the advertisement in support of this project as well, so that's, I'll, I'll leave it at that, and thanks for letting me have my say.
And that's your opinion, I agree with that too, Tom?
Yeah, to let this drag on a little longer, don't forget, Dan-
Now that we have a short meeting.
Don't forget, Dan, this isn't the venue or the forum that the Business Industry Association, or the Nashua Chamber of Commerce, or the Manchester Chamber of Commerce, is going to use to support their position, they aren't going to come here every two weeks and say something about supporting the project, the same with, you know, some of the businesses and industries in town, they're going to go through their trade groups, or their chambers, or whatever, for, for their positions, so, this venue isn't, there's nothing here for them, okay, so, you know, so when somebody had, and, 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 this is the most convenient venue that, that they, that the, the other side has to, to do that, because it's something-
It's one of the few venues.
Yeah, it's something easy for them, they can't go out, they could go out and arrange a press conference, they could go out and do something like that, but, you know, it's very difficult to get any kind of traction with that, or get any kind of attention from it, or any coverage, so, you know, they come here, and get whatever coverage they can get from, from the cable channel, and hope maybe that the reporter who waits for the, waits for the, the tape, the video, to get put up before they do their news article on what happened at the Town Council meeting, that they did attend, you know, to, to, to put something together, so, I mean, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's not an easy issue to, to, to manage or to deal with, and, and, and like I said, they're going to select their venues of where they can, where they can find them, they had a, yeah, you had another session up in Concord, okay, that they were pony center, I mean, that's where they go, so, you know, and that's, and that's part of the issue, as to why we're, why we see more than, why we only see what you would consider only one side of the picture, or only one picture of many.
Accessing of information?
Yeah.
Well, and that's, and that's it exactly, and the people who are sitting here and speaking to us are the people that we're elected to represent, and, you know, I say we're the lowest of the low, come on, Dan, I don't think we're that bad, but, you said we're the lowest of the low, it's like, I don't think we're that bad, but-
We don't have an official dog catcher in town that I know of.
Cemetery trustee.
But we are their, we are their voice, and we, we do have influence on other state, you know, elected officials, we officially as a body, so-
But that's where I respectfully disagree, and that's what I've said from the very beginning, we have such very, very little power, and I'm afraid too many citizens in town think that we can make a difference in this thing, they really do, they really have a lot of stock into thinking that we're going to be able to pull something off, and I-
Dan, I think people have a very realis, six months later, as Deb stated tonight, I think people have a very realistic opinion about what we can do as a council now, exactly, after we- And we, we do have influence on other state, you know, elected officials, we officially as a body.
But that's where I respectfully disagree, and that's what I've said from the very beginning, we have such very, very little power. And I'm afraid too many citizens in town think that we can make a difference in this thing.
I, I don't, I, I think people...
They really have a lot of stock into thinking that we're going to be able to pull something off, and I...
Dan, I think people have a very realist, six months later, as Deb stated tonight, I think people have a very realistic opinion about what we can do as a council now, exactly, after we've been through all of this.
I, I, I hear a different feeling about that.
Anyway, I just, I think them coming here to us is appropriate, as we're their elected officials. And if they ask us to collectively as a body, issue a letter or make a statement to the federal government or to our state delegation, that's all appropriate in my, in my mind. So I understand perfectly why they come here and speak to us, because we're elected to represent them. Thank you.
And I do think there has been a, at least from what I'm hearing, maybe there's things I'm not hearing, that initially, there was a misunderstanding that we had power and authority. And you're right, we have none, but we have opinions, and I guess that's what, what, what we can do is express opinions.
And voices.
And voices, right.
And while we are the lowest level of government, guess who's got higher approval ratings? We do.
Not too bad when Congress is down at twelve percent or whatever.
Take it, take it where you can get it, man.
I take it. Finley?
I was just wondering, if somebody wants to work in a town, in our town right of way, do they have to get a permit to do so?
Yes.
Okay. I, like probably many here, have gotten numerous phone calls over the pluses seen all over our, our town right of ways, and there appear to be a couple that might be in, in private property. And so, what, what I'm wondering is, if we could notify the state that, they, I don't think they came to us and said, because I asked, you know, a bunch of questions of where these came from and everything, and then I did ultimately find out. But, you know, when I, I started making calls myself before I got the answer from Eileen, and it, it's just, it's wrong. No, these are the plus signs in the road that are used for markers.
Aerial, aerial photography.
Gotcha.
Yeah. And, I mean, there was one gentleman in town, and it was in the article that was, I was pointed to, that actually marked with his GPS the locations, trying to figure out what was going on. But, but nonetheless, I, I don't know that the state came for a permit, I don't believe that they did. I believe they should have at least let us know what was going on, so that we could have communicated that to people that were asking us about it. And, and if it's in private property, which, you know, the right of way is kind of varying and wide, in some areas wider than people realize. So, but at the Merrimack House of Pizza, there seems to be one right in this parking lot. So, so I, I'd like the state, the next time, let, let us know what's happening, so that when we get asked what these pluses are on the road, I can make an intelligent answer, as opposed to saying I don't know. So.
They don't need to speak the low of the low.
That dials the wire. So, I, that's what I'd like, if, if somebody could ask them...
Common courtesy, if anything. Anything else? Bill?
Thank you, Madam Chair, the, the EDCAC met yesterday, all four of us. And they have arrived at a decision to reduce the number of meetings that they will be convening over, over the upcoming year, they're going to be quarterly. Basically, it's going to be five, it'll be four quarterly meetings, and obviously, it'll be an organizational meeting, so it'll be, really be five meetings altogether. Really, a lot of concern about the scope of what the EDCAC was from the very beginning, too. It's what I would term probably its nebulous function right now. They do have two projects on their plate from Community Development, one involving the Community Development Guide, another one that was tasked with us involving the mass markets tax credit. So, they have work to do, but they feel that the, the, the tasks that are being asked above them do not require, at this juncture, to meet on a monthly basis. They do, are flex, they, they are choosing to remain flexible in case there is a demand that, that they be able to, to meet. But that is, they, they arrived because of the dwindling membership involved with, with the committee right now, that they're going to meet on a quarterly basis. And as a consequence of the, the individuals agreeing to meet quarterly, Susan's probably not going to like this, but Susan will be re-upping for, seeking further appointment to the EDCAC. Her appointment is up this year, so she will be seeking reappointment. And that was a key factor in, in the decision to go from monthly meetings to, to a quarterly, to a...
She's a key member.
She's huge, absolutely huge. So that, that was the, the one piece I wanted to communicate to my colleagues tonight. The other piece was just more of a reminder that this past Saturday was the seventy-first anniversary of D-Day. And that Saturday, I actually bumped into Elaine Gibson and her father, George McKenna. George is a World War, is a proud World War II veteran, he was not a part of the D-Day invasion. But he parachuted into France and fought in the Ardennes, the Battle of the Bulge. Kind of like what, what Lester Langley did when he was, where he was recognized for, you know, the Hayden Faust, Faust's Eagle Scout Project regarding the World War II Memorial. So it was, I just wanted to kind of recognize Mr. McKenna for, for, for the service that he gave to our country. And it's, less than a million people remain that, you know, fought in that particular era. And I just, I just think, you know, every day that we have individuals like Mr. McKenna greasing our community, we should really take the opportunity to, to embrace the individual. Because he's, I think he's, he's seen a particular time in our life that none of us hope we never have to see in our own lifetime, so. So I just wanted to publicly recognize him and recognize the, the anniversary of D-Day. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Sherri?
Thank you, Bill just reminded me, too, I wanted to let you know about the Conservation Commission update. I believe, I'm trying to remember now, the Chair of the Conservation Commission, Tim Tenhav, did he send the update email? Was it to you, Nancy, and Eileen? I can't remember now if you got a copy of it, because if you didn't...
I don't think I did.
The update, the email that Tim sent to us regarding the environmental impact study and the progress that we're making?
Right, he did send that along.
Yeah, so, just a couple of the highlights, they're, they're about halfway through the amount of money that they've allotted for the study, which we're right about on, you know, on target, so much, end of May, beginning of June is when there's a lot of work to be done regarding the Verna pools and things like that. So, that was one thing I wanted to let you know about, the, the money that they've expended. A couple of highlights from the report so far, no big surprise, there's a lot of Verna pools out on Horse Hill Nature Preserve, there's a lot of them. They, we've also identified, I believe, some endangered species. We've identified some species, I think of toad possibly, that we weren't expecting, that we didn't know were out there. And also, there are some, quite a few habitats, I believe snapping turtles is one in particular, that is right along the right of way where the, the pipeline is being proposed. So, that's, that's an update, the Conservation Commission continues to work. He's also going to, Jeff Littleton is looking at the possibility of getting an expert in. There's been a lot of discussion regarding a particular bat that's been, not extinct, but I, I don't even think it's endangered, but their numbers are very low. And so, he's talking about the possibility of getting an expert in, because Jeff doesn't really have the expertise to analyze the data regarding the bats. And that's something that I know a lot of the state fishing game departments are interested in finding out in each town. So I think he was going to get the costs for a bat expert to come in and see if that was something the Conservation Commission wanted to move forward with. And then I wanted to thank the Merrimack Police Department for their participation. We had a huge presence in the law enforcement Special Olympics torch run last week.
Yes, we did.
And, and my son ran in the Merrimack leg and the from Concord to Durham leg. So I got to personally witness, yeah, he ran all the way from Concord to Durham, my son, yes. But I, but Merrimack was proudly represented, what an entourage that was. It was just, it was very, it was moving to see all of the runners and the torch and the different police departments and the state troopers and the Special Olympics van. It was, it was just quite a sight to see, and then they ended at the Durham Police Department and had a barbecue. And then the games started that evening at UNH. So I wanted to thank the police department, because they do an impressive job supporting that effort every year. Mike Murray especially, he's, he does such a great job, and they devote so much time to that. And it's, it's, it's something that I know they enjoy doing, it's different than what they have to do on a daily basis. So anyway, I wanted to thank the police department for having Merrimack be out there in the state and so proudly, and they just represented us very well. Thank you.
Tom, can you?
I'll just piggyback real quickly on that, to also thank them for their participation during the games. I know Merrimack had quite a few officers out there, including the Chief and Denise Roy and Officer Murray. And my son appreciated seeing them out there, along with my wife who were there. I was unfortunately not able to be there for the summer games, but they certainly had a great time and enjoyed the heck out of it. So it was great that Merrimack was there as well.
Nice to see familiar faces there. Yes, Dan?
One more to expand a little bit on, what Bill started off with, the EDCAC Committee. As a founding member, the first year it was founded, and a few years afterwards, I, I said this statement, and it's becoming more true, was that if you do not give an assignment to that committee, there's no reason for them to be. And so, if, one of the things we might want to talk about at our retreat, you've got a lot of good people, but if you don't give them something to do, some kind of an assignment, you, they're, that's why the group is getting smaller and smaller. So, I, if it comes a day where the committee just may be no longer viable, that might be the reason, for good or bad, no judgment on either way, but it's critical that they have something to do. So their, their, their charter rules do not give them, like, their own authority to come up with their own project. It has to come from us, so, we, we need to think about that. Thanks.
Eileen?
The other thing that's difficult is that a lot of the information that comes in with regard to new businesses potentially coming in and that kind of thing, is confidential. And whatever company it is, doesn't want to come before a whole group of people to talk about their issues. I think I've mentioned to all of you that at the next council meeting, we're going to be bringing forward a request for an economic revitalization zone for Anheuser-Busch to support their expansion project.
Any other, boy, everyone's had a comment, do you have a comment there, Tom? I don't have a comment.
Motion to adjourn.
That's a good comment. Motion by, made by Tom Mahon, seconded by Bill Boyd. All opposed in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any against? Would you dare? No, seven zero zero.
If you guys, you know, say yes, I can build that, okay, well, I'm going to go to the town, get a permit, and we're going to put Eiffis. I'm going to try to put Eiffis, you know what Eiffis is?
Yes.
It's like a Styrofoam stucco?
Yes.
The whole building will look like that. I'm going to redo the whole building.
So kind of have like a plaster effect?
It's a plaster effect, yeah.